Welcome to the Kingsland Canada Forum. We're glad that you're all here. My name is Tanya Glazberg and I'm a member of the Get Out To Vote team. And if you're not familiar with our group, we've been in existence about three years and we're grassroots volunteers, meaning we have no money. So, we have no dues, we have no organizational structure. We're just a group of individuals in Camden County who really would like to see more people turn out to vote and for those who do vote to have more information about the candidates or the issues that they're voting about. And that's what our focus is. Our focus is local elections, not national elections, and that's why we're involved with the Tribune of Georgian on forums like this, as well as other informational activities that we put together. We're strictly non-partisan group. We have Republicans, Democrats, Independents, and those who don't tell us what they are. So if any of you are interested in joining us in our endeavor, our website is Camdenvotes.webly.com. Did I hear that right, Tom? I think I did. We'd really like to encourage you to invite others to get behind the process of encouraging people to vote and to be more informed about what you're voting for. With that, I'll simply introduce our co-sponsor, the Tribune of Georgian, and Jill Hild, who is the moderator for this evening. Before I do, I want to thank Lindo O'Shaughnessy for making arrangements to stay tonight because she had a very long day and she stayed with us until we could be here this evening. With that, Jill, it's all yours.
Thank you, Tanya. I want to say thank you to the Get Out To Vote team. It's a big help to be partnering with that group in putting events like this on. They help us reach additional people and with all of the many arrangements that have to be put together before we stage something like this. And obviously, we share a mission of wanting to get good information out to voters about the candidates and the positions. So, I want to thank the candidates also for coming and joining us tonight. I know you guys are busy campaigning and we think it's important that we get together and answer some questions and talk about the issues facing Kingsland. Because we are so blessed to live in a country where we can express our political views and share these ideas of the link, I think it's only appropriate that we all rise and say a pledge of worship. Thank you.
We're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few words about how this evening's going to go. We have candidates in post one, James Galloway to my left and James Hamm next to him. In post two, we have Mike McLean and next to him is Mr. Rick Winters. Each of the candidates are going to get three minutes each to kind of introduce themselves to you and after that, we will go ahead and get into the Q and A portion of the program. We have a timer who is assisting us this evening, Mr. Jeff Tebow in the front row. He will be timing off three minutes and when he reaches 30 seconds, he will raise a hand and signal that you have just a few more seconds remaining. Try to wrap your comments up. We have a lot of ground to cover tonight, so let's go ahead and introduce the candidates and learn a little bit more about them.
Okay, so that was a word of prayer.
Um, just any, I, I'm sorry. Would you like to give your prayer?
I would love for us to start.
Okay, if you would honor us that way, I would say.
Heavenly Father, we thank you today. Father, for these men and women who are here today, we are concerned about our local government that governs the nation. And Father, we ask you now, if we begin to listen to these candidates today, Father, let us listen, God, and follow God, and let us make all the informed decisions, God. And Father, God, we ask that you bless this meeting and especially, God, and each everyone who is here tonight. And Father, God, we want to continue to give you all the praise and glory, for this is your most holy and precious thing we do pray. Amen.
And who are you, sir?
Pastor James McLean, pastor of Giants, Sisters, and Baptist Church.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right, we're going to start with the challengers, followed by the incumbents with the introductory statements. So, in post one, that's you, Mr. Galloway, how do you start it?
She's going to throw the rookie to the, to the, to the. Hi, I am James Galloway. I moved here in 1983 from a little town called Ultra, Georgia. I came in with a grocery store called Piglet Weasley. I spent a year with Piglet Weasley and then went to work for Gilman Paper Company in 1984. Stayed at Gilman until 1999, until I got to realize that one of my dreams was being a police officer and I was fortunate enough to serve here in the city of Kingsland. I served the city of Kingsland from 1999 until 2013 and then had an opportunity to move over to the sheriff's office. Always been a goal of mine to be a deputy here, but I would take anything for my time that I served in this city here. My wife and I combined have five children, proud of all of them, three of the best grandchildren. So, I apologize everybody, I have the best, so there's nothing we can do about that. My wife and her mom own Kings Bay Forest here in town, so small businesses is very important to us. Small business is the backbone of any community in Kingsland. Haven't served as a police officer here and still serving as a deputy with the sheriff's office, so certainly public safety is one of my top priorities. I'll make no bones about that. I am very pro-public safety. In the fire department, I've been able to work side by side with them along as with other officers that have come and gone. To me, you have to have the best. They make life and death decisions in a matter of a few seconds when folks get ears to second guess what they've done. So certainly, I think that a good training program, a good retention program on these officers, and we're able to do that. I've been side by side with Chief Smith when his guys have gone into burning buildings and been there when there's been good outcomes and sad outcomes. So certainly, when you have the best and people's medical history depends on you, I think Chief Smith knows it to the city and he does a great job of having some of the best trained there because in a matter of a few minutes or seconds, you can actually save a life. Small business, like I say, we think is very important. It is the backbone of our community. I think the city ought to be extremely friendly when it comes to businesses. However, we have to be good stewards when we start trying to bring businesses and industry in here. And having said that about public safety, I think we owe it to the taxpayers as councilmen that we represent the city, that we are good stewards of the city's money, and that what benefits the city the best is what we end up doing with the money. I certainly think too, we have a lot of issues. Head certainly drainage and sewage is one, but I certainly think that if we all work together, think outside of the box, we can certainly come up with solutions to the problems.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway. James Hamm is the post one incumbent, so many of us know a little bit about him already, but James, why don't you take a few moments and tell us about yourself?
Good evening, I'm James Hamm. I've been here since 1998. I came with the Navy. I'm a public servant. I don't get caught up on titles. I like to roll up my sleeves and get dirty. One of the things I bring to the table is building relationships. We live in a world where there's a lot of confusion, a lot of hate, a lot of disrespect, and I would like to see Camden County go forward as well respecting everybody and treating everybody with dignity regardless of who they are, where they come from, and how much money they make. I've been on city council three years. I've taken 42 hours of Georgia Municipal Association training, so I think I'm well expressed, just know what the city needs and how to deal with government. We talked about the budget a lot, a lot of nobody flooded. Though a lot of people don't know according to the Georgia Municipal Association, 7% of our budget should be for staff and salaries and taking care of the city business. So, money's a big part to our people, and if we're going to keep people, we're going to have to pay them comfortably to cities that pay more money because Kingsland doesn't pay a lot. The water sewage is an issue that we've been dealing with, something that's going on for many years. There's no way that that shit not even fixed prior to now. The people that are hurting, that have lost stuff two times, it's our job to work on that. And I know it's not going to happen overnight because the quicker you go, the more it's going to cost. But with a strategic plan, how to deal with the sewage and drinking, that's where we can use that water to better our city. California got a lot of fires going right now. We can reserve that water some and there's got to be where we can catch it. So again, I just want to help people and make our community safe, and that's all I'm about in a nutshell. I've been married to my wife for 36 years. We have four children. Our two youngest kids went to Camden County School System here, did good, finished college, and are giving back. So, a lot of you helping with my family, so that's why I do what I do. I just want to give back.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm. In post two, we have challenger Mike McLean. Mike, please share a few details about yourself.
Hi, my name is Mike McLean. I moved down here when I, in 99 actually, when I was about 11 years old and came down for small business actually with my family. It's a, it's a common thing down here, small business, like you said, is the backbone. There's a lot. I graduated high school in Camden County in 2004 and after that, I've been focused on the family business ever since. We've expanded multiple times. That's, and the business is actually a post origin. Very proud of how that goes and through that, I've actually experienced everything that goes into managing it. It's a lot more than folks think. We've got full-time when it comes to yard maintenance, which the city does as well. And being able to see everything that's going on in the city through my job, which in particular is actually delivering containers. And I, during Hurricane, I was actually able firsthand to see directly after the aftermath what happened. You've got hydrangea, road, honeysuckle over a Wolf Bay circle. Wolf Bay's having a mega sewage issue, so I got to see that firsthand and the corrections that need to be made when it comes to those problems. I believe a colder system would be very effective for that, and that's something that I've been able to see a lot. When, as far as my family goes, I've actually got a four-year-old son and my wife's got a young one on the way in November, so I'm very excited about that. But I can bring a lot to the table. I've got a lot of experience when it comes to maintenance, actually, when it comes to keeping all of our equipment up and running and everything like that. That's something that is a big part when it comes to city government guidance, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Our post two incumbent is Mr. Rick Winters.
Hi, thank you very much. I would also like to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's really important. I'm not one of those guys that misses a vote very often. I think the last one I missed was, I can tell you what it was. It was November 1998, and there were reasons for that, but I really do, I cherish my own right to vote and I appreciate everybody for being here tonight. My name is Rick Winters. I am the incumbent in post two. I came to Kingsland in 1995 when the Navy sent me here. And since then, I've retired from the Navy. While I was here, I went to work for Camden County Fire Rescue. I did that gig for a while and then I went to Kings Bay and worked for the EMS department out there. When they laid me off in 2011, I went to work for Excelsior Ambulance Service, and that's where I am now, and I am the local manager for Excelsior Ambulance Service. I am a paramedic, and I've basically done that kind of work most of my adult life, even when I was in the Navy. I bring the experience of working in the government, working in public sector, working in the private sector. Much like Mr. McLean, I am a manager. I do have to run a business. I have to stay in the black. I have to hire and fire people, and that's never a lot of fun to fire somebody, but I did that today. Those are the things of doing business, and I do that in business. My post here, my job, we stay in the black, we're regularly in the black. So, I know what that's like, to have to make a buck. I also, I was out walking through drainage ditches shortly after Irma passed through, and there are some issues. We have to be very, very careful. We understand that there's enough rain for the issue to go around to everybody. The city certainly isn't scot-free on the whole deal, is not fully white. There are things that we as the city can do better. But what we didn't expect was to get a storm that statistically should only happen every 200, 500 years. We can engineer to cover that, have everything taken care of, but at what cost? Anyway, we are looking at, you know, the city right now, we are, we need to get ready to grow. If anybody's been down in Uly, Florida and seen the urban sprawl headed north, it doesn't take much to figure out that we're going to be next. Anyway, I hope you have an enjoyable evening tonight. I hope we can get some questions answered, and thanks again for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. All right, our first question. During our recent Kingsland City Council meeting, there was much discussion over a one mil tax increase, which was eventually approved by a majority in council. I'd like to know why the incumbents on the panel voted for the increase and how their challengers would have voted if they had had the opportunity. Please explain your answers. We're going to start out with the incumbents on this question. Mr. Hamm, you start.
I voted in favor because I get out and talk to the people and I go with the majority of the people. I have a sheet that several people signed. It was passed right into the city council meeting, and it said on that sheet that we will work on the infrastructure, that they were in favor of pay rates. I don't just take a five, or six, or seven, eight, nine, 10 people vote. I get out and talk to the majority of the people. And they realized that we couldn't fix everything with this water situation, and they realized that if we're going to keep our police in practice, that we had to raise it. Now, some people may say it was not a good time, but if those people could have been able to stay in their houses, they would have been pleased. And so, to me, that's a great call.
Thank you.
If you say that, if they had, if the other people could have had a chance to vote on it, then they would have had a chance to stay.
Yes, you did. For the, for the others who aren't, who weren't on council for that vote. Mr. Galloway, if you were on council, how would you have voted in that situation?
Well, first of all, I say I'm very pro-public safety there, same paycheck that the police department, you're also pretty much same as my paycheck. Certainly, we were underpaid, and I would agree with that. However, I don't think that was the appropriate time to raise taxes, and I would have voted against it. My understanding from that meeting, there was an option. See, they would have paid for the maintenance on the fire engines as well as encompass the raises without having to raise the military. And what I, I would have explored that option, so we would be sure that we were correct on that. Certainly, the last thing we wanted was to have a fire truck breaking down because a penny pincher didn't want to spend the money to refurbish that fire truck. I agree it was a bad time to raise taxes, but I've never seen a good time to raise taxes. Every time I get my tax bill, I was going to, things going up. But there again, I would have voted no on the tax bill increase, and we would have found a way to get them what they needed as well as salaries, as well as refurbishing and getting equipment, because I walk in the police officer shoes. I know what they're going through. And it's a day, it's been almost a 20-year walk for me, so it's not like I just came home last week, got the military 20 years, and I know they're underpaid, and I know the equipment is an issue. But I'm all for thinking outside the box, and we have our top two people recommending a plan that would have paid for this without having to raise that military out of there.
Thank you. Mr. Winters, your take?
Along with Councilman Hamm and another member of the council, we, I voted for to raise the military. It was not a decision that I took lightly. It's not a decision that I don't think I actually firmly made, finally made, until right at the very end. There are some things that we need to consider. Number one, we had, we had pushed and looked at raising this military before any of us even heard the word Irma. We looked at it, we talked about it, we, we thought about it, and it wasn't, it wasn't an easy decision. The proposals that were put before us did not refurbish a fire truck. There was not the $200,000 that we needed to take an older truck and bring it up to standards. It's not that it's a bad truck, it's just older. We need to bring it up to 2017 standards now, or in a few years, we'd have to buy a whole brand new truck. You can see where I wanted to go with that. Another one of the problems is that with our police department, we get officers in, we get them through cadet school, we get them trained, we put them through fleet training, and get them out, ready to go on the road, and somebody snaps them away from us and hires them somewhere else. What we're looking at then is we then have to bring another cadet on and go through the same training period, and what's hidden is the money that we're spending on that training. It's unfunded. It's not budgeted for, but we still have to spend it. So then, when we're taking money to spend on the bringing an officer in and getting him trained, what are we cutting out from citizens on other things? It's not an easy decision to make to raise taxes. I'm not a real big tax guy. I like the idea that we were lowering our taxes, but at this point, we had to raise taxes. And as was said before, when is a good time to raise taxes? There's never a good time in my mind to raise taxes. Did I like doing it? I thought it was the right thing to do at the time, and doing the right thing for the citizens is what I'm here to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Mr. McLean, take a question.
I would definitely say that I would have voted for it. Many of my, my high school graduates actually work in police and fire, and they are invested into this community. And when you invest in something, you want to see a return, and these guys have invested blood, sweat, and tears into these, into our lives, protecting us, taking care of our fires. I've seen so many fires through damage that, you know, didn't do all so well, like you said. And to me, being able to see our fire department, our police, especially during Hurricane Irma, there's, we went through a really bad recession time. We're out of that now. Now's the time that we need to be expanded. I know that it was not a popular time for that vote, but what was just even more unfortunate was the timing of Irma. But this is something that can help us in the long run and right now, to retain the guys that are invested in our community and the ladies as well, and that's, that's who we definitely need to keep. Chief, the chief of the town hall meeting actually had a great example of retention issues. You have a $1,500 fireman's outfit that's only suited for a specific size fella. Okay, once he gets, takes off down for an Adena for a better paying job, you can't really do anything with a $1,500 suit that only fits one specific guy. We need to keep these guys in, have it something that they still want to invest their time into. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. We've touched on this issue, and this last question about what some of the problems are, maybe we can talk about some of the solutions. How do you feel the city should cope with the problem of turnover in its public safety positions? Why are they leaving? And is the city doing enough to retain its trained personnel? Throw it back right at you, Mr. McLean.
Okay. The big thing when it comes to strengthening public safety and retaining all of our individuals that work so hard for us is first off with pay, okay? That's the main one, all right? When it comes to the public works, or, you know, our public safety, EMT, there's EMT, fire safety, and police, every one of them has, has a bunch of different needs that are specific to themselves, but each one of them have to work with, work with each other. Retaining people who have known how to work with each other for years and years is something you can't really put a price tag on, okay? If you've got somebody that's got 10 years of experience, you know, and he leaves, and you've got somebody that just got out of, out of training, I mean, that's a humongous loss. For me, as a delivery driver, I've got to have streets memorized, and that's just a small part of my job, and that's huge. These guys have to know way more than that. You know, you've got fire hydrants that they've got to remember amongst, and that's just the one tiny thing. And to me, retaining these, these guys and ladies that work so hard and just sweat all the time, I see them running up and down the road. I hear them every morning, coming right out here. I live right off of East Street, and, you know, knowing that we could help them more would just, is to me, it'd be the best, is the best thing we can do.
Mr. Winters?
Thank you. I agree with Mr. McLean. We have to start with pay. When we have firefighters out there that make 10 to 71 an hour, and then we, even if they were on the high end, you get the 3% pay rate, that, it wastes the 3 cents. And that's really about, less than, right around $11 an hour, and that is really not enough to be able to, these are young guys, they have young families. And I say, guys, I mean women too. We need to be able to compensate them for what they do. I know what they do. I was a firefighter for a long time. I have never seen a fire department, though, right now, that has as high morale as Kingsland Fire Department does. They work hard. They work hard together, yet they're not compensated as much as, say, the folks from Camden County Fire Rescue. But they stay with it. They stay, they, they recognize that they have a good department, they are treated, they're treated, well, they're treated as professionals, they are, they're proud to be members of the Kingsland Fire Department. The police department, we do have some issues retaining people there, and I don't know what the actual problems are. Right now, Patrol Division is, you know, coming into this, one of the questions was, well, the police already have a built-in pay raise. Well, that does for Patrol Division. Didn't cover some of the other parts of the police department to give them the pay raise as well, to keep them around, and we need to do that. We need to find out what it takes to keep these folks. You know, you can have great morale, you can have, you know, quality pay, but the other thing is, I know with the firefighters, they have to have a place to live for one-third of their life. One-third of their life is spent at the firehouse. They work two, they work 24 hours on and then they take two days off, maybe. They need to have a comfortable, livable place, and right now, I don't think we match up to that. I think we need to be able to provide them with, with comfortable quarters, and I'm not talking about they don't need a, you know, five-star hotel kind of arrangements, but they do need to be comfortable. They need privacy, and they need some of the creature comforts. They need to be able to have an adequate place to prepare their meals, because yes, they do cook while they're there, and we need to be able to make sure that we, we keep them in a comfortable place with adequate pay and a great morale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway?
Yes, ma'am. And certainly, I'm all for the pay raises. Don't get me wrong or misunderstand what I said. I think there was a way to do it without raising the military. I go back to saying again, I think that law enforcement and public safety fire department are underpaid. They make high liability decisions, and it has to be made in spur of the moment. Mr. Winters mentioned a 3% raise that topped the scale equates to about 30% on a $10 an hour job. If you're looking at retention, and you're looking at folks that's going to stay and plan to retire here, I think your best option is reduce the healthcare premiums, which they don't pay fire taxes on, and then you also work on their 20-year retirement plan. Public safety has here. If you can raise that percentage a little bit, that certainly helps them with retirement, because granted, I get it, a lot of the younger folks don't look forward to that 20-year mark yet, or they don't realize what that's going to mean to them when they start to retire. That half percent, 1%, however we could work it out, where it's a decent retirement when they serve their 20 years, I think is a better option. And I think Councilman, they had even mentioned a $600 bonus, you know, at the end of the year for Christmas. If you kind of do the math there, that 30, that 30 cent an hour that they're getting, you're actually probably going to be close to bringing home as much or more money with that $600 bonus that you were, that hourly raise that they're making. Now granted, some folks will get more than 30 cent, so it would kind of work out, but you know how hard it is for all of us to save money, so 30 cent on an hour paycheck, you don't even realize on an 80-hour week, it's hard to save that kind of money versus getting it in one long summer. I'm all for the pay. Pay is not always the answer to everything. I think you have to work out with some of the Kings, whatever may be going on. And I can't speak for Chief Smith, I know he runs a good operation over there, but I know, working for Chief Griffiths for many years, I've had to watch other law enforcement agencies, you have a high turnover rate in this field. If some folks don't realize what they're getting into at a young age, and they decide to pay this thing for me and they move on, I will certainly be the first to tell you it is hard to feed a family on a public servant's pay. Most of us have worked two jobs, three jobs as we come along, whatever else we can come up with to make ends meet. So, please understand that, yes, I'm all for the raises. I'd love to pay them all $25 an hour or 10 hours a week, let's go home, but you know, that's just not feasible. Pay is a big thing, but you also have a question, you have morale issues such as that that come up, and I think that once you hook in and we figure out what's going on, we can, we can work on them issues. Pay is not the only issue, but yes, I serve here, even with the others, that they are underpaid, and I just think it could have been done without having to raise the military.
Thank you. Mr. Hamm, how do you feel the city should cope with the problem of turnover in public safety positions?
I'd like to see the city have a check-in and check-out sheet, have interviews with people when they check in and check out, like the military. The pay needs to be the same, not just professional responsible for everyone. As I said earlier, I've got to talk to the staff, and one thing that's important is, like you said, when you have somebody that worked for the city for 10 years and you just might just come on board, and the pay is only 10 cents different, there's a problem. And pay and morale go hand in hand. We need to talk to the people more and see what they need. If you talk to anybody in the city of Kings, they tell you, I go to each department and try to talk to them, there's things going on in my way. It means going out of my way, but it means that much to me. And they would tell me, they want to be here because they love Kingston. Their families want to be here. That's why the money's not the number one thing. It's important, but the main thing is they care about our city. So if you feel that way about our city, we need to take care of you. So if we can't get the money, then what else can we do? How can we accommodate you? Because these people are from the heart. And another thing I'd say to our city, if the top 10% of our high-ranking people leave, die, get sick early, they can't work, what is our city going to do? They have to get new people. They're not going to come to Kingston for a certain price. Okay? The other issue is today with young people, the 20-year woman or man is gone. People work three to five years, and young people looking for better pay, so they will be gone. So we have to have something to keep them here, and that's motivation to care about each other. Like the fire department has to have good morale. Public works, they have to work on the stitches, chop and chews, I'm right there. So again, check-in, check-out sheet, talking to the people, the insurance, brother Bobby said this, you got to worry, and that's important. The insurance is kicking a lot of our people, because if their wife won't have insurance, the insurance that they got to pay, that's taken away. They have pay raises, and it's saving them, they're not really getting a pay raise. So that's a morale issue. So if we can get better insurance, like I say, I'm all for it. But if we're to get ahead, you have to bump heads sometimes and fussing on me you don't love each other, husband and wife fuss all the time, but guess what? They stay married, don't they? At least the most of them. Amen. If you divorce your wife, every time you have an argument, nobody will be married. So mentally, they're in the fuss and still stay in love. And that's what City Council is about. We come out, we are a team. We might disagree, but we come a four of y'all, y'all see one face. Thank you.
Thank you. What are three things you think the City Council could do to be more prepared in the event of a major weather event like Hurricane Irma? Obviously, many citizens want to see a plan to fix the city's drainage problems as part of that. Mr. Winters, would you like to start us off?
Sure, I can do that. We talked about drainage. There are no easy answers. And I'll be honest with you, right there. We are, we looked at a comprehensive drainage plan back in 1997. And that plan at that time would have cost us $2 million. It just was not feasible then. Well, now we're dragging out the old plans, taking a look at them, dusting it off, and we have to get a new price on that. Now, because Irma has just passed through, there may be some FEMA money available. Now, don't get me wrong, FEMA is just, once again, they pay more taxes. I understand that. But when it comes to the tax money being spent here from being spent in Houston, I think I would just as soon have it spent in Kingston. Not that I don't love the people in Houston, but I love the people in Kingston more. There are no, there are no easy answers to drainage issues. We have to be able to, we have to take a look, what has changed? What needs to be fixed? And then we have to have the people to do it. Right now, our public works people are down to one crew, one crew that can get out there and work. We have to figure out a way to bring more people in to be able to work on that. Another item with the, I was asked to bring up three items. We have a problem with sewage. Once again, this is a multifaceted problem. We had our public works people go up into the neighborhoods, and I believe it was Woodhaven and Meadows, and they did what we call smoking the drains. They put smoke into the sewer lines. They see where it comes out, and that helps shore the leaks. Well, it turns out that a lot of people's cleanup caps are missing or broken. There's a little white cap that sits in the middle of your yard. You hit it with the lawn mower, and you think, oh crap, I got to go to Lowe's and get you a lawn mower. You know, I already been to Lowe's four times to get one, and I'm not going to get another. And here's the problem with that. If we take a gallon of sewage and we had 10 gallons of water, what do we have? We have 11 gallons of sewage. And the sewage is always going to go to the lowest point. And unfortunately, there are neighborhoods that are at the lowest point. One of the things that has constantly come up is, how could you let people build in such an area? Well, here's the problem with that. The land was not in a flood zone. It was owned by somebody that wanted to develop it. Who am I to say no? So, okay, those are two items. The next item, we need to make sure we have better communications. I don't usually listen to local radio. Maybe I shouldn't have listened to local radio. The paper comes out once a week, and they give us great information, but it's only once a week. We need to make sure, now, we were also had a, we're working with the Emergency Operations Center of the county, and in a combined way, we only use them. So anyway, I'm out of town. I would be glad to discuss this further if anybody wants to. Thank you very much.
Mr. McLean, your turn.
First off, I just would like to say that public information is, would be the first step when it comes to any disaster that's about to approach immediately. Social media is a new tool that we can spread so much information at a click, okay? So waiting on a paper or worried about, you know, if it's going to come on the radio, every one of us probably has a cell phone in their pocket. Something that I would love to bring to the table is being able to bring a social media aspect to this. So something that, coming from the city, a city official that can say, hey, this is what we need to do to prepare for this. These are the areas that we already know from Hurricane Matthew, Hurricane Irma now, okay? And these are the ways that we need to be prepared, okay? Wolf Bay Circle, just like Councilman Hamm said, or Councilman Winters, I'm sorry, was one of those big areas that was affected when it comes to sewage. Now, that was actually affected by the nor'easter storm that came before Irma. Now, a lot of folks thought this was the storm coming right, you know, this was Hurricane Irma. And it was just a very bad storm that we got hit double with. And he was actually seeing those problems during that first storm. So that's an issue that needs to be, needs to be fixed. And, you know, kind of dealing with public works and engaging all the community members that live in that neighborhood so that we can, you know, adequately fix that. The second thing would be knowing all the areas that were hit. Like I said before, I went to every one of them. You had Gross Road that became a dam. Actually, residents over there were calling it Gross Road Dam. And it was because it just wasn't allowing enough water to get through. Now, when it comes to drainage and things on our properties, we've got a big ditch that goes through. Now, that's something before these storms that we do, is we go through every ditch. And I'm talking a mile back into Mariners Landing and everything, those creek systems, is there's beaver dams that are out there. In this place, in Camden County, has a ton of them. It's not a matter of killing them, they're going to build it right back. But right before a storm, it's imperative that we all get out there and do our part when it comes to checking that. But on top of it, making sure that you have the culverts that can promote the water to go from one side to the other. Making sure that there's no stoppages in the midst of those culverts preventing water. That would be my second thing. The third would be having the government have a big, solid voice when it comes to what can be done after the fact. Okay, we've got FEMA coming in. This is where it's going to be at. This is what FEMA actually does. There were so many people that didn't even know what FEMA did. I did not know what FEMA did, okay? And they actually just end up doing, they help us when it comes to adding a second loan onto a house that we already have a loan on top of. So we need to be fixing the problems, but we also need to be helping our community know where to go to get the best information and help. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hamm, three things that the city could do better to deal with a weather event like Hurricane Irma?
I'll take it on dear, but I'd say communication, lessons learned. I've talked with several people that were affected. And to show you something, when I say we fuss, several people at the meeting that were affected, and some people said we were fussing. I tell my wife, we're sparring, we have fuss, we're just sparring. But I've made friends through those people, and you'd be surprised who's helping these people. See, a lot of people don't want their name out front and in the limelight, you know, saying I did this, I did that. But our city is doing a great job helping folks. So the three things would be the drainage, personnel, and pay. And all of them involve communication. I'd even like to see like a volunteer work department. We know we got hurricanes coming, have a volunteer team, and help out with their volunteer fire departments. Because we know the rain is coming, we can catch that water, okay? When I was at school, I did a science project, we built a car that ran off of water, okay? A few that checked the car. We can catch that water and maybe build another water tank. We got three water towers in Kingston, maybe make a fourth one. We can save their water to water the grass with, our yards in Kingston, we have a shortage. California got all these fires going on right now. They could use some water. So these are things that we can do to be prepared. Catch water. We can't wait till something happens and try to run to the catcher. Have stuff before the hurricane come. The lakes, Wolf Bay Circle, Meadows, Summer Bend, Hydrant, Virginia, all these areas. We've been doing this for years. But nothing, but Applebee's, I mean, the same thing. There's got to be where we can catch that water and use it. And then we all win. As we say, communication, the pay, and the drainage, and the personnel. You know, we need to find out what do the people need. As I say, everybody's trying to get people, people don't have a job. Nobody wants to have, typically, get a job. Two people want to hire you. Once you get a job, everybody will want to hire you. That's the way, because we need to see what these people going through. Brother Galloway said here, most of our EMTs, they work two jobs. Almost, everybody got to work two jobs just to make it. If you're over 50 and you got retired on the radar, you did good. But these young people are not going to be able to make it. Guess what? They don't have the tenacity to survive. You're going to have more suicides, more homicides, because these people can't take it. So we need to try to find a way that can meet them halfway. But again, communications, lessons learned, and a volunteer, make a step for the city to be up.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway, three things that the city could do to be better prepared for future weather events?
I certainly agree with the rest of my folks up here that communication is 99% of the battle. Once we put this out, we know what's coming. All we can do is urge the citizens to heed to the advice that we are giving. We've got experts telling us you need to evacuate from here, you need to evacuate from there. Yes, I certainly agree with that decision that that homeowner has to make. And I certainly get it when you've met your problems before, your tendency is not to leave. You want to protect your property and all. I think the city can be better prepared by making sure that the drains are cleared, the beaver dams are busted as best we can. And I know this is a manpower issue. We certainly cannot be fully staffed to prepare for a 200-year storm every year. My suggestion would be we work out MOUs with other counties. They send their public work people to help us. We do it all the time with the fire safety and the law enforcement area. They send their public works crews down here to help us. We know what our problem areas are. We deploy our assets to their problem areas ahead of time. Whatever drainage hasn't been fixed by the time the next storm comes, we know that that's going to probably be a problem. Then we have everything ready to go as quick as public safety and public works can get out and start trying to help the people out. For instance, when this storm came through on Sunday and that nor'easter started, that would have been a good time to have an available crew to go out. End it with some pumps, whatever it may have taken to have gotten that sewage and some of that rain out there, put all the water we could possibly could. Communication is a very important tool. Everybody has to be on the same page. Sometimes you'll get information from the county, you'll get it from St. Mary's, you'll get it from Kingston. To attending them EOC meetings and make sure we're all putting out the same information. I can remember Hurricane Matthew, there was a big question over re-entry. Some people were being told they could not come in, some people were told they could come in. And I think when all three of them, law enforcement agencies who make that decision are on the same page and we all put out the same word. So whoever, I do agree with Mr. McLean too, we need to have maybe a city Facebook page up or something, just bombard social media with the information, but make sure it is correct information that we are putting out, and somebody will be assigned that task during this event. That is all you do is maintain the social media page. And I certainly think with our MOUs, we can keep our calls down. They will send people to help us, because you certainly, you don't have enough chainsaws, you don't have enough tractors, and you don't have the manpower for it. We would turn, we're agreeing to go help them if they have a major event, if something comes along on that line. So I guess my three things would be certainly preparedness. We'll make sure our drainage ditches are good to go. We'll make sure that stations are as top-notch as they can be. We communicate with each other, and we work on deploying assets to the problems areas just as soon as it's safe for the employees to be out there.
Thank you. And if you'll indulge me, I want to say that the Tribune in Georgian, even though we publish a hard copy paper once a week, we continue to report all throughout the week and also rely very heavily on social media. I think between John and I, we had probably 100 posts in that week. So it was critical for the newspaper, to say the least. We're going to turn our attention right now to transportation and traffic in Kingston. How can the city make Kingston roads safer for all modes of transportation? Not only for motorists, but also for pedestrians and cyclists who share the roads? Mr. Galloway, would you start us up?
Well, I think, there again, I'm a little partial, yes, but I like a strong police presence. Speed is always a factor. Of course, you have technology now involved with people driving. And it's just incredible the amount of wrecks and crashes that we have and people texting along that line to being distracted drivers. And certainly, I think a visible police department may get folks focused a little on driving and paying attention to what they're doing. You know, that's a little sore spot for me, because there's just seem to be crash after crash, you know, every day, a lot of them could have been avoided. Also, I think, you know, with the traffic lights the way they are, we look at the sequence of how they run, maybe keep traffic moving, give them a DOT, because that's who runs the traffic light situation. And we look at the timeline, what time is elapsed. Highway 40 is just about as bad as Jacksonville. All day, night, it's traffic everywhere. It's hard to get in and out anywhere. I think if you do that, and we look at, certainly before they come in and do a project, if they'll let us sit down, and then we'll discuss how they have their turn lanes and how they have their stop lanes. And everybody knows that intersection at Lowe's is pretty much a nightmare. Try to avoid that if you can, and find a different way to go. It's just hard to get in and out right there. But I think the communication with DOT, that would help, and a strong police presence, visible police presence.
Thank you. Mr. Hamm?
Communication. Right now, I think everybody's driving faster, and something that really bothers me, and one thing that really caught my attention, is, you know, 40 gets all the attention, but the other streets don't get no attention. Over here on 17, the railroad track right down here, the lights flashing and cars. I almost saw a car get hit up there, because they barely missed the train. They need to have the flags that go up and down, up high, people can't see that. They need to come down over there on, on James Boulevard. They got train cars there all the time. We live in a fast-paced society. The young people always on the go. They don't want to, everybody want to be a hero. And that's definitely caused noise. They found the police and fire department all going for an accident. Better markets on our roads, better repairs today. Like I said, if it's on 40, they're pretty, that's downtown. I don't see them downtown. There's not a downtown, there's nothing really here to say this is downtown. And I fuss at that about that, because if we're going to be downtown, we need to be downtown. But again, for safety, for update traffic lights and railroads and crossings, you know, you have to have updates though, because this railroad track down here is going to get somebody killed. So again, just communication. When Georgia Department come here, they don't want to talk to us. But for the city, we need to talk to them. Everybody got to go through the chain of command. It's getting hard to communicate. And that's why people are posted. You can say hi, I called this person, here's a card, just take him home, just say something with ease attention. But people are aggravated, aggravated, because they're good people, they ignore them. And you know, that's why I tell people, no matter how much money or education we have, we all equal. And people are tired, people thinking that they're better than people. These people that are thugs and gangsters, I tell them, they will protect us. These people in this hotel down here, I guarantee there's a gang coming here. They'll let certain people know. That's why you got to be nice to these people. You never know who's going to have you. So safety, police presence. Slow driving, like one so fast, definitely takes you talking. We have to sound.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Mr. McLean?
Definitely, I would have to agree with Mr. Hamm. The police presence on the roads is definite. It definitely slows everybody down. One thing I wanted to point out, though, is on Highway 17, actually, that's a national bike path. And everybody's probably been right north of the Blue Bridge and see how fast everybody goes through that. It's scary that how, how, how close a bicyclist actually rides to those cars and widening, not necessarily widening the roads, but making sure that there's a police presence that knows, hey, share the road, okay? There's, there's been deaths on the roads the past few years, actually, by bicyclists being hit, by people texting and driving. That, that would definitely improve public safety, in my opinion, seeing how I've got a friend that does bicycling on the roads a lot and it works every time I see him go out. The, the next thing that I would say when it comes to bringing in the public safety is making sure that our, bringing it back to police and fire, that when it comes to there's wrecks on the roads, we had a very unfortunate accident out there that Hydra was hit. And I tell you what, is seeing all the police scramble and fire, EMT scramble and do such an effective job was, was amazing to really see even from afar. Being able to strengthen our public safety when it comes to that would definitely help when it comes to safety on the roads. When it comes to our fire, our, our lights on, on Highway forty, I have to say, I don't know if anybody has seen it, but it's been going from Kingsland to St. Mary's has been flowing very nicely. And I think that we keep up with a nice flowing traffic system, people aren't gonna be getting so hyper to get to the next light and they know that it's gonna be flowing freely, which will promote safer driving.
Thank you. Mr. Winters, how do we make roads safer in Kingsland?
Mr. McLean touched on something that I, I knew that Highway seventeen was National Bike Path ninety-five, believe it or not, because it, you know, it goes along with ninety-five. And you're right, seventeen's too narrow, but we can't just say, okay, we're a public bike lane. There's a whole lot of engineering that needs to be done into that. You can't just say that. So we do need to, we do need to be conscious of other people that are legally using the road, whether it's bicyclists or pedestrians. One of those things is police presence. Ten years ago, we had, we had decided Patrol Division, we had Traffic Division with our police department. We no longer have that Traffic Division. I would like to see us re-institute that and that would go then towards the police presence that, that we talked about. For a long time, I referred to Kingsland-St. Mary's Road, or you may call it Highway forty, or Osborne Road, or King Avenue. I prefer to that as St. Mary's-Kingsland Raceway. And you go the speed limit out there, you're gonna get run off the road. And that's what I, since I became a councilman, I do set my cruise control to the actual posted speed limit, trying to be a good example. But I get run off the road quite a bit, where people get pretty angry, tenderly. We do need a police presence. Now, another thing that we have rolling on here is Highway forty, Georgia Highway forty is gonna redo. And it's going to, it's going to actually be someplace else. And that is Kohler Range Road out to the west, and then it then becomes Laurel Island Parkway, a little bit of Martin Luther King Jr., Boulevard there. And then Laurel Island Parkway back to Kohler Range Road as it gets into St. Mary's. That is going to be the new Georgia forty. Trust me, they've started working on it. Kingsland finished their work on it a long, long time ago. We, we did what we were supposed to do in DOT, the county, and on St. Mary's, kind of all like behind us. Anyway, they are working on it. We are making it wider. We need to look at, and we need to ensure that we're building into that safe items that can be on that road. Let's put some bike lanes out there, if we can, give it into the design. Once the old, what we call Highway forty out here right now, let's take a look at re-engineering that just a little bit, if it's not going to be used. Once we get, once it's no longer a state highway, then we have more ability to work with Moon Street and the exits and entrances there because then those will be property to the city of Kingsland. We don't have to worry about what TMT tells us. And those are some things that I think we can do to make our street safer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next question. I was gonna talk about the Epic Adventures Project. What is your best prediction on the success of the Epic Adventures Project at Exit Three? Does this still have the potential to be a significant economic engine for the city? We'll start out with Mr. Hand.
Okay. Thank you. A lot of work has gone into it. It's with it from the very beginning and hopefully everything will materialize. My biggest concern is the drainage because oh yeah, there's still a lot of issues there. And the college is coming and so, you know, it's gonna be a sports complex as well. So I'm hoping it'll be enough to cover everything, that it can make a profit. It's a great opportunity. I think a lot of people are nervous and we hope that it will pan out to be successful. So, y'all, I tell y'all I'm gonna pray and I'm definitely gonna pray for it to work out because we do use the money, but also just the benefit I see that it can do for us. But I think, I think it can.
Mr. Galloway, same question.
I think the Epic Adventures Project, I think if, as you said, if I'm elected to your city council, I will be absolutely certain about this drainage problem. Certainly, if some incidents have happened since Hurricane Irma, it's come to light that, that that may present a bigger problem for drainage, whether it be water sewage and everything else. I am all for bringing any kind of business and industry here that benefits our, our city. I think if we research that, we are absolutely in agreement that this is the best project for the city of Kingsland. And certainly, I would hope to do everything within my power to make sure that this project goes through. But there again, if we take a look at the research, being new to the game, I won't have to research on that project a little bit before, before I can actually say what's what, but to make sure that it's in the best entry of the city, if there's a reaction, there's a reaction. And I want to be absolutely certain that it doesn't create us more problems for the homeowners and all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Winters?
I think this was an unfair question for the, the challenger. Dean Combs had been writing a little bit more on this. I am hopeful that this is gonna be a good project. I, I really do. I think, I think it has a good shot. There are, you know, there's certainly challenges and people are frequently worried, what's coming into my neighborhood? What am I going to see? You know, we, we, I think we've gotten past the idea that it's gonna be an amusement park. It's not gonna be an amusement park. At least none of the plans that I've seen recently have an amusement park. So let's just, let's just put that way. We're not gonna have a water park. There may be some water attractions, but it's not gonna be a water park, okay? But let's, let's put those away. Drainage of that is certainly an issue. Another issue that we're gonna have that we haven't talked about is getting the sewer to everything over. Now, that isn't gonna be that big because it's really not that far from the sewer plant, but we're gonna need to be able to move the amount of sewage over there. This is built in phases. There are going to be things that are built and then we move from phase one to phase two to phase ninety-three, however many phases it needs. No, it's not ninety-three, it's much less than that. But you're right, it, it, there is gonna be some issues. We definitely need to make sure that we're not having problems with, with drainage, that we get that taken care of. Another issue that we need to look at is our water supply. We have not tapped a new well in quite a long time. We need to consider having clean water to send to that park. When I first moved to Kingsland, I could have one hose and run three sprinklers off one hose. It, it was possible, it was doable, we had that much water pressure. But as the city has grown, the water pressure has dropped because we haven't put in more wells. I can run three sprinklers off a single hose anymore. Those are issues. We need to make sure that we have water, that we have sewer, and that we have proper range. But I'm very hopeful and I think this is going to work well and I think it's going to be a money maker for Kingsland and for the citizens of Kingsland. Thank you.
All right.
I actually have been hearing about the Epic Adventures for, for years now. And I've seen it go from, just like Councilman Winters said, from a, a, a big Disneyland looking thing to now a more feasible plan, in my opinion. Now I'm seeing a lot more ballparks. I'm seeing a place where people can bring their RVs, something that really can bring the community together. And that, to me, seems like a great thing. Bringing jobs into, into this community is fantastic. We, we need to definitely promote that. But at the same time, what we need to look at in the bigger picture is just like that, when you have these bigger things that are coming into our cities, we're, we're having the spaceport that's coming in right up at Harriet's Bluff, okay? That's gonna bring in a whole different, different types of folks that are gonna be coming into this town. Same thing with, with the Epic Adventures. There are big changes in the city. And what's the one thing that you need to have solid is your police and fire already ready. And that's why we need to be investing when it comes to those issues so that we can be able to take on large projects such as this and effectively take care of them and push them forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. How would you rate the health of Kingsland's infrastructure and how much of a priority should this be in Kingsland's budget? Mr. McLean, you're gonna start us off with that question, please.
Well, I think it's been a great example from Hurricane Irma of what our infrastructure looks like and how much it can handle. I think we've been able to see what the extremes of what it can handle and we need to fix those and take care of the, when it comes to our sewer infrastructure as well, that's an aging system. Right now, I've heard that there's getting water leaks that are coming into those, which is creating sewage backup such as in Wolf Bay and during these large storms. Being able to take a look at all of our systems, which I know is expensive, but it is a necessary thing to do when it comes to time to time, just like our fire engines, there comes a time to replace those. Now is probably the time that we need to be taking a look to make sure that it can handle the next set of storms coming our way.
Mr. Winters, same question.
Thank you. Actually, I have to agree with Mr. McLean. We are faced with some challenges when it comes to our infrastructure. And these are not gonna be easy fixes and it's not gonna be that we can just go out there. Water and sewer is a special kind of funded item called an enterprise fund that I got to learn about when I became a city councilman. It's money that they have to be able to support themselves. We can put money into the enterprise fund, but you're not making money off water. You're not making money off sewer. Yeah, it sure seems that way. We have to pay a bill every month that the city's making big time money, but they're not. We're basically, whatever money we can save, we can then put forward into buying new items. And we do have an aging system. We need to make sure that our pumps are, are good to go, they're up to speed. But it doesn't matter how good your pump is if it's underwater due to flooding. You still can't run it. What we said, what I said before, we could engineer, you know, a system around it, but at what cost? I think the city really needs to take a careful look at the infrastructure such as water and sewer, such as well, once again, we're gonna say drains, that's part of the infrastructure too. These are items that are aging and we need to, we need to look at upgrading. We already know that we need to move water from the east side, we need to move sewage from the east side of Kingsland underneath ninety-five to get over to the sewage plant. We already have a pipe there, but we probably need a second one. We know that. But at what cost? It's gonna cost a lot of money to do that. And it, it needs to get done and eventually it will be done. And I'm not talking eventually like in a hundred years. I'm talking eventually it's gonna be one of those top items that we need to do. But then we're not just working with Georgia DOT, we're also working with Cleveland DOT. And it's gonna be a challenge and that's something that we need to be able to do. We need to be able to, if we're building more homes out in the north shore of St. Mary's River, which is part of Kingsland, a lot of people forget that that's Kingsland too. We need to be able to supply them water and sewer. And we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure that can support those communities out there as they grow. And we definitely need to take a look at infrastructure and be ready to grow as our city grows. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway, how would you rate the city's infrastructure and how much of a budgetary priority should that be?
Well, I think we're gonna all be on the same page here and certainly are, which shows that we have some infrastructure problems. These problems were not created overnight and they wouldn't be solved overnight. I think it's gonna take some hard work, some dedication to figuring out what the problems are, what areas are their biggest problems, and then we're gonna plan to fix them. I'm sorry, what's the second part of the question?
How much of a budgetary priority?
I think it needs to be at, at least one of your top two or three projects right there. Certainly, your main project is keep the city running and keep the people safe. Second off, we have to address this infrastructure issue. There's gonna have to be, we're gonna have to get creative and find ways to pay for it. We'll be doing grants, grant programs that we make and come up with, that we're gonna find grants through our splash money. I think we have to turn in our list of the first of the year, how we wanna spend our splash money. Maybe let's dedicate, dedicate that to figuring out what this problem is and we're gonna fix it. And then we, we take it one step at a time. And it wasn't created overnight and it won't be fixed overnight. So I think our work, teamwork, we can solve that problem.
Thank you. Mr. Hand?
Thank you. I agree with everyone else. We have an aging system and a health and failure system and we need to get ASAP and get some money into it. My recommendation would be to look at all areas which we've already found, which areas have flooded, and see which ones is the worst and, and start working on it. It's gonna take a lot of time. I'd like to see it done before it gets cold. And then we'll get more work done. But it's an opportunity for us to prove that we're listening to the citizens and taking action. I think at this point, it'd be no more talking, it needs to be a plan, say, this is what we found and this is what we like to all start taking care of, and we owe that to our citizens. And again, the money needs to be there as timely as possible.
Thank you. Many of you have wish lists, things that you know that the city needs and would benefit from. However, cutting costs is a much more difficult proposition. What cost-cutting measures would you like to see the city consider in its quest to keep expenses low for its taxpayers? Mr. Winters, would you like to start us out?
Okay, so where are we gonna, where are we gonna make the cuts? Very difficult question. It's a, is it, do I, am I type law enforcement? Or do I type fire department? Or do I type public works? These are all very significant things that we need to work on. Through the years, Kingsland has managed to hold the line on raising any taxes. And a lot of that has been because as somebody left a position, the position was retired, the position went away, it was eliminated. And we are down to the bone. I also know that we, there are too many more positions we can cut. And then how are we going to cut, you know, how are we going to lessen burden on the taxpayer? A lot of that might come through splash money. Recently, we, we allowed a cell user to put an antenna on top of one of our water towers and rent space up there. I'm not saying we need to rent out the city of Kingsland, but there are still things that we can do like that. You know, things that we can, you know, get, get some investment back on our investment, get some money back on our investment. As for where to cut, gosh, I really don't know. It's easy to say, well, you know, you know, we need to pay that city manager, we don't need to pay the fighter chief as much as we do. But we do. These are people that we need to keep because they've already proven themselves. And once again, it's back to the age-old question, where are they gonna run off to? I don't really know where we can cut. I think we need to look closely before we cut anymore because I think we've already cut to the bone. Thank you.
Mr. McLean, same question.
I think that it's a, a, a great question, actually. What would you do for cost savings? I believe we went through a period, actually, where we cut to the bone, all right? And we're actually getting to a point now where we need to be looking forward to a point where we can add something. A good example of that, when it comes to our police department, is child, is a, an inspection unit that needs to be in place for child protection, okay? When it comes to unfortunate people doing bad things to kids. We act, that department was actually cut during the recession time, okay? There wasn't enough money for it. Well, I'm sorry, that is a big priority on any parent's or community member's agenda is making sure something like that at least has an investigation, okay? So that right there, to me, would be a, a, a great example of something that I would add right now instead of cutting. Because, let me tell you, in, in my opinion, I think Councilman Winters has done a, a great job, you know, but, but as far as cutting, it is a tough question. But I think we need to be speaking more about adding, okay? Strengthening, building our community and not deciding on what's the, the next corner we can cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hand?
Okay, thank you. I agree. We've cut all we can and the thing is, if you come and see the hall right now, it's only about ten people in here. And I come and I tell them to keep that back door locked because you never know who might try to walk in here with the ladies that we have. Mayor and then always be the safety first. I want these ladies and gentlemen all to be safe, particularly our ladies. So cutting back is not gonna solve it. I think at this point, we need more people, we need qualified people and we need people that care. I don't think there's anything else we could cut. We could consider switching something around. Only thing I think we could really consider switching, maybe look at, if we could save on insurance costs. Because that's one of the things that I brought up with this Irma thing, because with the flooding, the insurance people don't wanna pay because they're saying it's an act of God. And yes, it is an act of God with all these drones flying around, these cell towers, these[1736.11] have tried to put all this stuff in the air, it shifted atmosphere, you call it active guard, it is an active guard, but the insurance people and the realtors need to be, change their stuff and to pay the people their money, they're paying their insurance payments everywhere. So, if I had to think of a way not to, so that I said we need to add to check out legal stuff, whether it's through our city attorney, it can get laws, it takes several years to get a law changed, several years to get a road fixed, so many people have to die before you can get a new red light. But we need to get enough noise going about the people that have lost their homes and insurance companies that don't want to pay because they're saying it's an active guard. We can't control God. Okay, but we need to say, if an active guard take place, you need to get some of your money back because these people pocketing the money. We don't have to flood every time, we don't have hurricane, but the money's there and nobody want to give up the money, they want people to pay. So, look at the insurance people, look at the realtor people, look at our lawyers who make the laws, and let's get that jog in the next today's time because it's going to be more stuff, it's going to be more deadly each time. Each time is getting worse and worse, so let's look at this legal paperwork and get some, get some feedback from our realtors because they know business got drawn. If you say there's a flood zone, people are not going to buy it, but then insurance, so we can't say insurance cost is not a flood zone, you got us in a catch 22 situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallway, what cost-cutting, cutting measures would you like to see the city consider?
Well, I think, and I think we all look concurrence to, that the council did cut the budget for years and at the time seemed the appropriate thing to do, the housing market had fallen, people were paying $4 a gallon for gas, so we tried to give the people some relief as best we can. What I would recommend, we have very capable department heads, Chief Smith, Mrs. Marra that's here, Chief Griffiths, Mr. Coleman, Mr. Wise over at Fleet Maintenance, that's what we pay them for. When they turn in their budget requests, that's, they should be turning in stuff that, yes, you have some stuff in there that you'd like to have and then you have stuff that, you know, you've got to have to keep your department running, to run it efficiently and to provide the service that the taxpayers are paying for. So, I would certainly like to sit down with each department head when it comes that time and say, hey, is this what you need or can we cut something here and how can we save this, how can we save that? Again, we still provide the level of service that the citizens deserve. And I think good communication with the department heads, we trust their judgment, that's why you have them in that position as we go from there. When the economy's booming, I certainly feel like we set money back to the side to prepare for the times coming because maybe it runs inside, there's good times and there's bad times. Get paid to be prepared and give a hell of the citizens if we need to take a tax break or, you know, if we have to raise taxes for whatever reason, for everything. I think even like Chief Smith in reference to the refurbishing the fire trucks, there's going to come a time, the fire trucks have to be replaced. We start planning now to replace that so it doesn't catch us in a bind when all of a sudden you can't repair it anymore. It has to be replaced, I think, future planning. Like I say, we've got very confident department heads and they're very good at this, so I would say when it comes to cutting the budget, we sit down with them, Portion Smart, head bean counter as they call it, you know, we sit down and say, hey, this, this is what we can do, you know, we'll be able to cut here or we're going to have to spend somebody here to provide this level of service. Thank you.
Thank you. How would you like to see the city capitalize on the improvements currently underway for the exit six interchange at Interstate 95 in Coleraine? Since this is an exit that many people use to enter our community and access the high school, the rec center and the community college, excuse me, the Coastal, College of Coastal Georgia, it's no longer to mean to them. Mr. Gallway, would you like to start us off? What are your ideas for, of how the city can capitalize on that improvement going on at exit six?
Well, I certainly think it'd be a good idea to bring some businesses in, to go out and recruit businesses that may be interested in coming to Kingsland and we work with them in any way possible to make, make that happen for them. Again, I go back to small business being the backbone, doesn't have to be a major industry, but we need stuff to, when our children graduate from the college, we need job opportunities for them here, something that keeps our kids in town, they build houses, therefore they pay taxes. So, certainly I think we need to go out and recruit businesses to come in and look around that exit six area.
Mr. Hand, same question?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to see a nice hotel out there. Exit three has grown to a point that is like grown out, so I'd like to see a nice high-rise hotel. Kelly got to move up and get a nice high-rise hotel. So, something like that would be a nice space, a retail shopping center, it's got the space for that, office subdivision back there, but with the interstate going there, I think that would be more conducive for businesses like that and it could bring money to us.
Thank you. Mr. McLean?
I would like to see, considering the future of the, of the city going with a spaceport amongst, we were talking about epic adventures, it's going to bring a lot more people in, a lot more working based families that aren't going to be able to afford the larger houses, things like that. So, what I would kind of foresee is more of a compartment complex, it's very nice on the other side and that would be something that we could use as a hub for housing, the spaceport employees that are going to be working there at various, at various times. But making sure that we can use that to house and, and promote, you know, safe area for, for people to move in with their families and their, and their loved ones would be a definite, definite plus for our city. The next thing would be possibly an area where we can have more of a community engagement, a place where we can all get together out there. One thing we were talking about before this started was over at the churches, Kingsland, Kingsland Baptist over here, how during Halloween's coming up, 4,000 kids show up and it's just so great to see all that community involvement. I would just love to see a bigger, larger section that's dedicated just to that. Thank you.
Mr. Winters, exit six?
Thank you. I think one of the first things we need to do, everybody that's gotten off the exits at Kingsland gets off and is going into the woods and wonders what they're going to find in the, in the end of the woods. First thing I think we need to do is clean up our exits. Let's, let's cut all the trees out. I mean, I'm not, I'm not real, I'm not talking about cutting forests down, you know, clear cutting anything. But let's, let's make, let's open up the exits, let's make it nice, let's make it pretty, let's make them inviting so that we can get people to come off the freeway and spend some time. Now, we have, you know, exit three, we know that we have a lot of hotels and that's, that's a good thing. We may need some more hotel space, so maybe to put in some hotels there. I don't really know, I don't really foresee a lot of private housing, recent public housing going right in, close digs, I think as we move down, Royal Island Parkway, either way, you know, we do have a lot of folks that are coming to the, to the schools and the last six schools, I'm referring both Camden County High School and the College of Coastal Georgia. The, but let's make it inviting number one. The road is going to be widened, let's make it safe and let's make sure that we can develop something that's easy in, easy out, making it desirable for people to be there. If anybody hadn't really noticed, there's been a lot of demolition going on in the old truck stop that's up there. And I haven't heard anything, I don't know anything, but I'm hoping that they're looking at trying to get that sold or get it refurbished, get it reopened. I don't really think that we need to put another, each truck stop in on the west side of 95 because we already have one that's working there and possibly one that's going to reopen. So, these are things that, you know, and there are areas back out behind the truck stop, back out behind some of the other properties that are there and we can open up, we can, we can get some businesses back in here and, and business is a good thing. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We're coming up on the end of our time, so I'm going to ask one more question and then we'll go ahead and let them give some concluding statements. I'd like to personally thank all of you for making the decision to run for office. It is a huge personal commitment, it's often a thankless job and you don't get compensated nearly enough for what you do on a personal level. So, my, my final question is, if you are elected to this next term, what do you need from the people that you serve? What can citizens of Kingsland do to hopefully be a more effective council member? And you had Mr. Hand starting us off on that one.
I would say communicate and respect. I think from the Irma, we were very passionate, but I think we learned that we can all work together and have some great relationships to call it then. Like I said, I live in the old fashioned way where everybody just did along and I just refused to change, I think the old fashioned way, do it to others as you have to do it to yourself. Hard work and doing the right thing will pay off and so, if we just have people to talk, abolish your opinions, sometimes we may not be able to, sometimes we may get passionate, but let people know how you feel, that some things we can change, well, some things we can, but some things we can't, we think out of the box, there's a way, you can still be legal and be right, you know, just take a look, search it, but it can be done. So, I'll say just respect and, and talk.
Thank you. Mr. Gallway?
I'd like to see more folks attend the city council meetings, inform themselves of what's going on in the city and certainly get out and exercise their right to vote. I think as citizens, when they communicate with us, we need to be willing to listen to what they have to say and understand too that even folks that work for them tell you that might say, it's always been, nobody has all the answers, but everybody's got some of the answers. Also realize that we're not talking to one person, we're trying to talk to two, three, hundred, whatever, may be willing to communicate and talk to us and give us good honest answers as to how they feel about things. And I think we take that in consideration that they understand too that when a decision has to be made, the long stops here in the city council, you can't, you can't tell this one, that one, and tell this one, that, and then try to make a decision that pleases everybody. There are tough decisions ahead and you've made and the citizens understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Winters?
Do you know, I have to really echo what Mr. Gallway said. I really think that what we need from the citizens is we need them to be in touch with us, to call us. My number, my phone number's out there. I purposely did not take my phone, phone number out of the, the phone book when I was like the city council, I want people to be able to get in touch with me. Also, my cell phone's out there, I do get calls on a regular basis from citizens, but I need to hear from the citizens more, they need to come and talk to me. As for coming to the meetings, before I was elected to city council, I used to come to city council meetings just because I could. And I know that the council at the time would see me walk in and they would think to themselves, oh my God, what's he going to say this time? I was not afraid to get up and say something in front of city council. And that's what we need to have, we need to have an interaction and we can be respectful and not yell at council and council yell back and, and we can talk and we can have a conversation. There is always a time for the citizens to, to tell us what they think. And certainly, people can always be in touch with me. I'm not going to hide from people, I'm not going to say, oh gosh, there's Mr. Stow, that's Chief Smith calling me, I'm not going to answer his phone call. I don't do that. And Terry knows I'm messing with them because Chief Smith and I have been very good friends for a long, long time before we had one of us take our position. Anyway, we need to have, we need to have a conversation with our elected officials and our elected officials need to be able to speak honestly with us. And I'm not going to lie to you, I'm not going to blow smoke up your skirt or anything like that. I need to hear what you think and I need for you to be at least willing to hear what I have to say. And it's going to come down to the rubber meets the road, I have to make the best decision on the information that I have and I will move forward from there. I thank you all very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McLean?
I think when it comes to being a council member, you would, you really need to have a certain level of civility. Civility is how you engage anybody that's around you. When, during Hurricane Irma, that was definitely a time for the council to listen. Everybody had their thoughts and they were putting them out there, okay? After the fact though, civility is very important when it comes to engaging the community. It's sometimes very difficult for people to get off work and come to these town, town hall meetings, thank goodness we have cameras that can send it off to everybody. Social media once again is an issue, it is, it is a, a way to bring information, bring people closer, more closely connected through that. Come at, come ask me questions through social media, make it easy, you don't have to come to see me, you could call me on my phone, right, I'm right there, on that Hippo storage, I'm anywhere, but at the same time, I love to get out with the community and ask what are, what's the problem? What can be done better? Because everybody from here has all sorts of walks of life, the histories from the Navy, Air Force, electricians, and they all can have something to give. And if you can do, be an effective listener, then, then it can definitely come together and help you be a better person and a better council.
Great. Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. We will make a quick concluding statement just to wrap things up. And by my last minute, we will start with Mr. Winters.
Thank you very much. Once again, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. I know it's nice away from being at home, being away from family, coming here to, to listen to us growing on and on and on. But I also, I'm appreciative that you're, you're joining in, into the solution and that's what we hope to find. I came on to city council to fill out a term for another council member who left as the council to run for another office. And I think I've done that quite effectively. Now I'm ready to, to move on, I'm, I'm ready to step up and we're going to, you know, not that I'll be any more of a council, but not that I was any less of a council before, but now it's time to, to dig in and get to work and actually move ahead with the, with the agenda. There are things that I want to see, there are things that we need to do better and when we do better, we can do it less extensively and we, we can grow the city and get a larger tax base, then we can start cutting back on what we charge the citizens in taxes. These are the things I'm pushing for, I'm striving for and I want to see happen and I would like to ask each and every one of you for your vote. Thank you very much. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. McLean?
First off, I thank you again for, for coming out here today. I have grown, grown up here and seen this city grow from, from being fairly small when I first came to town to much larger now and it's exciting. I am invested in this community and I am loyal to it. I'm a CCHS grad, '04 and, and it's, it's definitely something that I'm, I'm very proud of and I'm sure everybody else is who lives here. I couldn't imagine doing something that would mean more to me than to represent my generation and doing something better for my community. This is, this has gone through a very tough time, especially for all of us during the Great Recession and I feel like it's time for me to step up and, and put my input and my help and my vigor when it comes to finding out what these problems are, understanding what's going on around me and getting it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hino, concluding statement?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for their support and again, as I say, it's a privilege to serve, public service, some people say, I don't say politician, and I said again, I'm not a politician, I'm a public servant, that means I work for, I work for the city, I work for the community and so, I don't have to worry about changing, having to change your words, whether you say Reverend or James or whatever, doesn't matter. If I'm a public servant, you don't have to change anything. So, it's my privilege. I've learned a lot, I've seen our community grow a lot, a lot of us seen me work over here on 17 and we've come a long ways with that building and it's all by the grace of God and the people that have helped us and that's just one of the things to make our community better. So, what I have is yours and so whatever I can do, I'm here and again, thank you for all that you do and if you need me, give me a heart. Thank you.
Mr. Gallway?
And I would echo my counterparts, thank you all very much for taking out the time to organize this city, Mr. Yelker hosted it, and thank you for coming and attending it, showed some interest in what's going on in the city. I certainly look forward to the opportunity to continue serving citizens of Kingsland as councilman. I look forward to the challenges, we all know that there are challenges out there and I'd like to say there are opportunities. Anytime a problem arises, we have the opportunity to show how good we are, that we can band together and we can solve these issues and move forward from there. As I said in the beginning too, I have the three best grandchildren, so yes, I have the vested interest in the city of Kingsland prosper. We set this up for when we retire somebody to take our place, I was taught that a long time ago, the good leader trains the man or woman underneath him to take his spot. If I was to lead and somebody cannot fill my chair, then I have not done my job as being able to train folks to be able to move this agenda forward. I look forward to the opportunity, there's a lot to educate myself on and educate myself real quick, but I'm up to the challenge and I would greatly appreciate your vote and again, thank you all for coming out and supporting this event.
Thank you. And that concludes our program. I'd encourage you all to exercise your power to vote on election day and tune into the Tribune of Georgia Facebook page on election night where we'll be reporting returns as they come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.